Yes, turn your mic on.
Is that, is that still a bank? Is there anybody, is that a bank? I don't know who else Fargo is there.
Yeah.
The other one, is it still a bank?
No.
Is it?
Good evening. Welcome to the Barefoot Bay Recreation Town Hall meeting regarding the Sebastian River Medical Center proposal. Please stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag led by Mike Mayno.
This region will be hacked if you would. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the required, for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming and please turn off all cell phones. Mr. Compton, would you please do the roll call?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Klosky, are you here?
Yes, sir.
Trustee Henderson.
Yes.
Trustee Mayno.
Yes.
Trustee Compton's here. Trustee Loveland.
Yes.
We have with us our, our district manager, John Coffey. We have Stephanie Brown, our district clerk. And we have with us today Ralph Taylor and Becky Boyle from Stewart Medical Group. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Before I go, I want to ask the board of trustees, are we going to go with the three-minute rule or how, what do you want to do?
Yeah. I, I say you go three minutes.
Yeah.
I, I'm for three minutes.
I agree.
Okay, so anybody that comes to the podium, you say, state your name and address and you have three minutes. Okay, I will now turn this meeting over to Mr. Taylor and he will give us a explanation.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me okay? Hear me in the back, way back there? Okay.
John, how do we advance it to those slides?
Okay. So first, I want to thank everybody for coming out. We have talked about putting some medical services inside the bay probably since, if I recall correctly, it's been last summer, sometime last summer, in July or August, we first broached the subject. So, you know, we'd looked at the empty vacant space that was in the building. We wanted to get some renovations done for some code enforcement things and electrical and some other things. Then as we looked at that, we thought, well, you know, it might be better to just try to attempt to put a unit somewhere that's not as, we didn't want to touch the green space as much as we could. But we wanted to kind of put a unit somewhere close to that parking lot, to utilize the parking lot. We had an analysis done of the parking lot to see if there's enough spaces, and there is. We had an analysis done of the property of what the residents called the green space. And we found that that's zone commercial. So it, it is zoned to put a building there. And it also has enough parking either by the water district or up by the, right beside the main building. So I wanted to kind of give you guys that background a little bit. If you look up on the screen, you can see the size of the unit and the layout of what we're looking at. So as, as you look, and I'm going to use this pointer, can everybody see that okay? So this would be the main entrance where you'd come in and register, have a large waiting area, and then you would go behind these doors on either side to see a physician. So if you notice on the layout, you have a doctor's office here and you have a doctor's office here. The intent of having two doctor's offices, you may say, why do we? Would, would it help you guys in the back? Would it?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much. The purpose of two physician offices. Maybe these lights up here and leave those on back there maybe. So the purpose of the two physician offices is one office would be a primary care physician. The other office would be there for specialist. Now, you may say, what's a specialist? What are we thinking? So we're thinking cardiology, pulmonology, orthopedics, GI, gastroenterology. So a, as we think about all of those specialists that could be rotating through, it's a convenience factor for everyone that lives in the bay to see them here in the bay instead of having to drive out. Now, that doesn't mean you have to change physicians if you currently have one. It's just an opportunity for us to put a couple of physicians, one being a primary care physician, either internal medicine or family practice, the other one being a specialist in whatever it may be. Now, the specialists wouldn't be here every day. So they would rotate. So on Mondays, you may get pulmonology. On Tuesdays, you may get cardiology. Wednesdays, GI. Thursdays, ortho. Fridays, general surgery. Or, as an example, that's kind of what we're thinking. Also in this office, besides the two physicians, would be a nurse practitioner. Because what we want to do is have the ability to have appointments for those that want to come in for a well-care checkup or whatever it may be from your physician. If you want to come in and get a checkup, you want to make an appointment, do your monthly visit, you can do that. But if you also hit your hand with a hammer or you drop a two-by-four in your foot, and you may think, well, I don't know if I broke it or not. If you notice in, at the top, we're going to have X-ray equipment in the building as well as a lab if you're on medications where it requires you to do monthly labs. So we're trying to get as much stuff inside the bay in a central point so you don't have to go outside unless you so wish. So that's up to you. Can we go to the next slide? So this is a little rendering. This is not exactly what it would look like. But when I asked the architect to send me something to kind of give you guys an idea of what we're talking about, you can see it's got a couple of units on here to heat and cool, but this is only too wide. So if you notice from the previous slide, it looked like there were four. It's much bigger. So it's twice the size of this and the entrance would be in the center. This is just to give you an idea of some landscaping ideas and how it would look with a handicap ramp and some steps. Does that make sense? Go to the next one, John. So as you can see, the, this entire area, and I'm going to take my pointer and go around. We looked at this area as far as zoning within Brevard County. That is all zoned as a commercial space. And I do understand the need to keep the green space. So this was just plugged in here because it was close to a part of this building right here that's vacant. So we thought, well, let's put it close to that vacant lot, the vacant building. But, you know, this can be moved anywhere within this line. And as I was sitting and, and talking to some folks from Barefoot Bay, it made sense if this thing was to be moved right here, might be less of an eyesore, it might not block potential views of the green area if it was moved down here along the water district. So understand, this is a modular unit. It could be moved anywhere it needs to be moved to depending on what the community wants. If, if, don't want to take up this, this much, so I, I understand the views that you would have here. This would kind of see the back of the building, may not be what you want to see. But we can move that anywhere that you wanted to move it, we could put it here. I don't know that it would fit here, but I know that it would go here. And I think there's some dumpsters there now next to that water district, right? Isn't there some dumpsters on this side if I'm not mistaken?
There's a shell of a dumpster right.
Right here? Or is it over here?
Right there.
Okay.
It, it's not in use, but it's a shell for an old dumpster.
So the amount of green space that would be taken up, we would try to move it as close to the parking as we could because it's a forty-eight by sixty. Now, one of the advantageous aspects of having a modular unit is if you don't like it, so we, we're looking for a land lease from Barefoot Bay. All we want to do is lease the property. We will do all the improvements. We will run the sewer lines, the water lines, we'll put the unit in, landscape, do all of those things. And then if, if after five years you decide, no, this is not working, we, we just don't think this is going to work, we move it and we reclaim the, the green space. But we hope that it's such a beneficial service to the bay that we can continue to up the lease. And, and we're asking for a five-year initial and a five-year post as a renewal so we can continue the service. At Sebastian River, it, and I want to be sure I explain this correctly. About forty percent of our admissions come from the bay. So a lot of people inside this, this community use our hospital. And as I round on people in the hospital, one thing they kept asking me when I'd say, is there anything I can do for you? It wasn't about the hospital. It was about, we need medical services inside the bay. I heard that eighty to ninety percent of the time when I ask what people need. So this is our attempt to do that. A lot of people had some questions, you know, that I've talked to about Stewart, which is our parent company. But I want to be sure that everybody understands, I, I live in Sebastian. I live in the Highlands. I'm, this is my home. So all health care to me is local. If you have a problem, you, you see me at the hospital. You don't see corporate folks. You come to me and I, I'll get it fixed for you. So I just want you to know that as, as though Stewart's our parent company, a lot of people have parent companies. But I live in town. Our new CEO lives in Indian River County. I have a lot of employees that live in the bay. I have volunteers that live in the bay. And we consider the bay to be part of our community. And I know a lot of your residents consider Sebastian River to be their hospital. So I, I just wanted to close with that statement and open it up for questions.
Audience, anybody want to have a question? Come to the podium. The X-ray.
Richard, one oh three seven Royal Barefoot Bay. I see the, the X-ray and all that there. Are we talking you would do physicals in there for people too? Or just walk-in emergency type stuff?
No, it, it, again, there would be appointments where you could get a physical. You could get X-rays, you could get labs. Now, the X-ray machine's called a portable X-ray. So it's limited on some of its capabilities, but it could do chest X-rays, abdomen X-rays, KUBs, feet, hands.
A lot of us from up north are on the physical part of it. We went to doctors where they had a bicycle in there with electro-cardiography. They had put on you the ultrasound for, say, carotid issues or things. Would that be part of this exam area?
So I, I don't think that we are looking at doing stress testing. Now, there's a possibility that we'll have, we'll, we'll have EKG machines. But doing a stress test in this small of a building is, is, is going to be really hard.
Okay, how about ultrasound?
We could probably bring a.
Yeah.
Portable ultrasound.
Yeah, that's, I mean, you know, things like that.
If that's something that we need.
For like carotid, is that what you mean?
Yeah, carotids.
Oh, yeah. Small portable ultrasound. So, so just, just for the audience, there's a couple of different kinds of ultrasounds. There's hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar ultrasound equipment. And then there's a portable one that kind of looks like a, a computer on an Xbox or a Playstation if that makes sense. And you, that one is much easier to be able to come in and look. It's black and white and you can see an occlusion from a carotid. The color ones get a little bit pricey, but yeah, we could do that.
And then like blood work, would that be type or?
Yeah, if you notice up here, there's going to be a draw station right here.
Okay.
So you could get any, any number of blood work that you want because they'll take that back to Sebastian River where we have everything in the hospital to run.
And that blood work could be sent to your physician if it was outside of this unit. It would go to, say you had a physician in Sebastian somewhere.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So most of the.
Or an ultrasound, you would send, hey, let me send this over to her. Or the doctor said, they might need to see a specialist here. Something might be a little clogged there that we're showing.
Correct, correct.
My three minutes up, Joe. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Next.
Rich Swatlow, six-three-six Marlin Circle. Just want to touch on the parking issue. The bay would just had an issue with a building that we were thinking about putting up. But we had some disagreement, not disagreements, but we had some concerns about the parking at that location. If you are thinking about building behind the water company, you're going to have your own staff parking there. Plus, we're going to be putting the new veterans of building right next to the water company. So that means there really won't be any adequate parking right where you're finding a building next to the water company. So again, do we have anything in writing from Brevard County that actually gives you permission to have enough space there?
There's, there's actually, you have to have X amount of spaces and X amount of handicap spaces per tenant. And right now, the, the spaces, John, could you go to that? The other? Yes. So in, in this spot right here, yes, that, you will have employee parking there. So there would be a, you'd probably have four or five cars from staff. And you could park four or five cars here. So this is, you could, when you're looking at this parking, it's not just this because this is connected with the inner parking circle. You can count this. Now, you can't count any of this because it's so far away.
But do we actually have anything in writing from Brevard County that says it's okay to do it?
I can actually get that for you. We had our architects and engineers.
I just want to know there's something in writing.
Mm-hmm, I can get that for you.
That's fine, thank you.
Yep.
Dave Wheaton, fourteen seventy-seven Barefoot Circle. We actually own that big chunk of land between the two banks.
Here?
To the west right there. And if you people were a huge success and wanted to grow and be even bigger, I believe it's, the board of trustees could actually sell you that land, which might be more feasible and economical for you.
We, we, we could. I mean, that's a possibility. So that's why we're here tonight to discuss initial steps and then future planning. So this would, this small footprint would be an initial step. And then maybe we're there for two years and we've already seen that we've outgrown the building and we need a bigger spot. It may be possible to purchase property and build a, a bigger complex. But again, what we don't want to do is upset the green space within the community too much.
Yeah. This big green space down here.
Yeah. Well, either, either, because this is a pretty significant-sized green space if I'm not mistaken in between the banks, right?
Yes, it is.
So, I mean, we really, and again, we want to provide as much service as we can with a minimal footprint.
I. I still think that personally, that that would be the, the place to go if the board is going to decide to build a building and put a parking lot in and everything else in the big green space. I thought that would be a better solution to have it up there. Thank you.
My name is Diana Buck and I'm at nine oh nine Balsam Street. I have one huge question. What is your urgent care plan? Who's going to be here when somebody has a heart attack, a serious injury or something, and a railroad track is blocked by trains? Have you thought of that? Do you have a plan for that?
So we do know a schedule for the railroad and typically when they run. But during an emergency, just like Brevard EMS will tell you, that's one of the variables. So if, if there is an emergency, if someone comes into our clinic and is having a heart attack, an active heart attack, our first thing is going to be dialing nine-one-one. Just like any other hospital, office, clinic, like any physician office, you call nine-one-one when you have a dire emergency. It's a heart attack, a stroke, someone has a compound fracture, we're going to call EMS immediately.
Okay, so you're not going to have doctors there that can stabilize the patient?
Oh, absolutely.
You're expecting the EMTs to do that?
No, the doctors can stabilize the patient. We can't transport the patient.
Well, I'm not asking you that.
Yeah. But we can stabilize the patient, call EMS, have them come pick up the patient, take them to the closest hospital.
Okay, will you have access to a, a plane or helicopter if they need to be airlifted out? Can you do that? Will you be able to do that?
Yeah, that, so that's an EMS call. That's not a hospital or a physician office call. That's an EMS call. So when we call nine-one-one, EMS assesses the situation and they would, if they need Lifeflight, they would call Lifeflight.
Okay.
Which is the same for, for all of us.
Okay, anywhere you go?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I think there should be more offered than just, okay, here, have a blood test. Here, take two aspirin. You know, I think it should be a little more coverage than that.
Well, it's going to be physicians. It's not just medical staff.
That's true, but I want to make sure if, as an, a resident here, I would like to make sure that if it's going to, if there's going to be a facility here, that facility, facility is going to take care of my emergency needs, no matter what.
Yeah, so everybody's trained on basic life support and advanced life support. And that, there's going to be an AED in the office. So we're going to have all of the equipment there that we need to stabilize. There's, there's a certain number of medicines there, but again, there'll probably be no narcotics in the building. But there'll be, you know, resuscitation drugs, just like we do in our other offices.
Okay, thank you.
Hello. My name is James Morrissey, three-two-eight Loquat. I have two questions. One, today I was at the CBO office around one o'clock today. There was no parking at the CBO office. We had to park in front of the bank to go to the CBO office. So if you're talking about including the CBO office and that parking area as part of your parking area, I just don't see it happening. I see more, more space needed than what you're talking.
So I, I don't know where the CBO office is.
Right in that parking lot, right there where the.
It's right here?
Yes, that's pretty much it, right there.
So as, as this was an initial conception of what we wanted to do, but we, we really think that it's probably going to be less of a footprint and an eyesore if we put it right here. You, were you saying you used this parking lot to, to go over here?
No, I'm saying the, the original parking spot, you had the light on first.
Oh, yeah.
I was in there and there was no spots available.
Yeah.
Normal day, nothing special going on.
So that's why we thought it would be best if we moved it from the parking of this complex and got it down around here where, you know, you have the DAV. I think it's in this side of the building, in the water district's in this side.
So then how, how many spots would you be adding?
We wouldn't be adding any. We'd be using the existing parking of the water district right here.
So if the veterans eventually move into that building, which I thought, I heard that that was going to happen, you would be just taking up whatever little bit of space is there at it, nothing at it.
No, there wouldn't be any space added, but I, I did find out that golf carts, if you're, if you're a golf cart driver, can park in the green. So the, the vehicular spots here would be taken up, but golf carts can park anywhere in, in around the building there.
And I guess my second question would be, what is the overall, if there is anything, benefit to residents of Barefoot Bay where you moving in, other than the fact that you're a medical facility? What's the monetary value that benefits us as residents of the Barefoot Bay?
So monetary value, you mean for the, for the community?
Yes.
My investment of a million dollars into the community? Because if, if I buy this building, set it up, do all the contractor work, I'm investing a million-dollar partnership with a company, with the community. So, and that's done by SMG that's hiring the doctors, putting the doctors in, buying all the equipment, buying the building, running all the utilities. So part of the investment for me is getting into the bay to provide a community service. So our, our parent corporation has a branch that deals with an ACO. And part of that is quality care and doing wellness. So a lot of stuff has transitioned from hospitalization to getting your wellness check.
I can understand that. What is the dollar value that benefits us? What are we gaining monetarily?
It'd be a land lease. We would lease the spot that the building would go on, that would be paid.
And them numbers have not been discussed yet?
I, it's typically, land leases are typically, you take the value of the property and you have a certain percentage and you pay that monthly over the course of five years.
I'm sorry, my time is up. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. My name is Robert Schmidt. I live at ten thirteen Thrust Circle. And my suggestion is there's, to reduce the green footprint, you've mentioned a few times today, tonight, is that there is an existing medical building, facility within the building. And recently, right next door to that, there's been a big opening of a huge space. And I believe if you've got both those offices, you'd be able to do all that you want to do and cost you a lot less than a million dollars. That's all I really want to put in. Thank you.
Hi there. Jeff Gurno, eleven sixty Barefoot Circle. I think this is a fabulous proposal. And I think that partnering with Stewart would be a great idea. Now, I'm coming to you from two points of view here. I work in the Veterans Service Office, which is right about where the Y is. Now, over, up, up where those two paths are. Next to the CBO, right there.
Okay. Right there.
I could tell you on Wednesdays, I do Wednesdays ten to two, there's no parking spaces out there. So right at this point in time, I think the Achilles tendon here is going to be parking. Now, the other thing I think we need to take a look at is that we, I appreciate the fact that you're thinking about the green space. But we use that big field where that big red block is right now. That's where trunk-or-treat is and all kinds of other things. So what I would suggest, and I think David Wheaton made a really good suggestion, nobody really uses that green space between the two banks. There's a fire hydrant sitting there. And I think that is the perfect place to go with the least amount of disruption. I could tell you that behind the water district is also a good place. I actually went and looked at it. But I can also tell you there's no parking there either. So right now, the water district and in front of the CBO, parking is going to be a huge issue. Other than that, I think it's a great idea and I think Dave Wheaton gave a really good suggestion. Go for the gusto and put it between the two banks.
So before you go away, just my question, would, so you're saying use this space and then create more parking in that space?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That would be my suggestion. Move it there. And the reason I say that is, have you ever seen the kids playing there? The kids don't play there. But if you go out to the big field, the kids are playing in the big field and we use that big field for trunk-or-treat. I would say right now, bite the bullet, do it right, build parking and put it between the two banks.
Louise Kraus, eight zero eight Sappadilla Drive. I guess I am also talking about parking. When I look at the areas that you have suggested, I don't see accessibility for people with disabilities. I don't see accessibility from the parking lot to the entrance of your building that would be safe for individuals. I think you are going to have to build some parking areas. What is there now is not sufficient. If the doctor's office space in that end piece is rented out, then you have more people parking there. It's already an issue. There is not parking there during the daytime. It didn't even get a great deal of relief when the barber shop moved around to the front of the building and left that place empty. So I think parking is the biggest issue. When you talk about moving it behind the water company, you're going to have to put parking there because there is no access to the parking areas from that facility.
So, so if I may, this, this was an initial conception. So I want to make you guys aware. I, I'm not saying it has to go here. This is just one of those red dots on a map. So we had talked about here, we had talked about here. Honestly, to be honest, I thought this was untouchable. That's why we didn't do anything there. So again, trying to minimize that footprint on the green space because I know the bay has very little green space left. But, you know, we could put it wherever the bay decides. And listen, this is the residence building. This is the residence service. I'm just helping get the service here. So wherever the residents decide it needs to go, that's where we'll put it.
I think the biggest consideration for all the residents and for you as well is can the people get to you? Do you have a proper place for your employees to park? Assuming you're going to have more than four or five individuals, there's an administration area. You've got doctors. Uh, you've got doctors, one or two doctors there all the time. Uh, you're, and a, and a nurse practitioner.
Yeah, that's why I was looking at her because she knows all those figures. I don't know all those.
So I'm, I'm counting more than four or five cars for those individuals who work there, plus the ones who are coming in to, to, uh, take advantage of the services.
With everyone there, you're probably looking at about seven or eight cars.
Yeah. And we don't have places for seven or eight more cars in the areas that you're looking at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick Shaw, eight oh eight Beach Court. I do have a question, a concern and a recommendation. Uh, my question, if you're putting an urgent care in, how, what kind of days would you be open? Would you be open seven days a week?
So that's a good question. So it's going to be extended hours. Um, there'll be Saturday hours available. So it's a primary walk-in clinic, more than an urgent care. It's a primary walk-in clinic. And what we're looking at is having extended hours to probably six to seven PM at night and having hours on Saturday.
So it wouldn't be listed as a actual walk-in clinic?
It'd be, it would be a walk-in clinic, yes. So the, so here's a good example. There's another walk-in clinic down from the hospital, but they close at four. That, I mean, most people that need a walk-in clinic, the busiest times in the ER are between ten and ten. So, you know, ten AM to ten PM is hugely busy. If we can keep it open to six or seven at night, we might capture some of those urgent cares, some sicknesses, injuries and stuff like that.
Okay, uh, my concern is that with Sebastian River, uh, you currently have or had two doctors in Barefoot Bay Medical Park, uh, Dr. Fields and Dr. Jones, who recently retired. So is that going away?
Well, it, it all depends on this meeting. So what we'd like to do, that office is really small. We'd like to have a bigger office. And we'd like to have more services. But it, it all depends on what the community needs are. If the community feels that we need that, more services and rotations of specialists putting inside the bay, we probably wouldn't keep both. I mean, honestly, it would be-
Well, I, I've kind of figured that, but my concern there was that even when Dr. Jones and, uh, Dr. Fields was there, they're only there a couple of days a week.
Right, right.
And, you know, to, to bring something like this into the bay like this and you're only committing for two days a week, that's not really sufficient for-
Yeah, we're going to be there six days a week. Maybe, and if, if, if the community says, hey, this is how many times we had to go on a Sunday, we'll open on Sunday.
I'm just looking at history.
Yep, absolutely.
What Sebastian has already shown us with Fields and Jones. But also where the old, uh, or where the Dollar General was, Sebastian had a white building in there prior to that.
That's way before me, I don't know.
And, and that's now gone too. So, uh, there's a little bit of a concern there. And honestly, my recommendation, uh, is that if there, if you do come into the, into the bay and bring these services in, that would be great. Uh, we've got open spot in that building that would actually have some monetary value for the community instead of a land lease, which would really not bring very much money into the community at all. It is bringing a great service. Don't get me wrong, it is bringing a great service. But monetary wise, it's not, especially when we have open, uh, uh, open area within the building.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I take just a minute to just address one of your questions, um, or concerns? We now have a nurse practitioner in Dr. Field and Dr. Jones's old office, five days a week. For all of the residents, they're open eight to four thirty. Um, we started that up a few weeks ago. So I just wanted to let everybody know it's available.
Sure. And there's, there's more doctors in the area right there.
Oh, yeah.
We understand that.
Thank you.
Catherine Marsh, fourteen seventy nine Gardena Drive, Barefoot Bay. My question is, I am a patient of Brenda Fields. Now, we've all been scrambling on finding a doctor. We've gone through three of them. And finally I had to change the card again. Are you going, are you saying that the people, the nurse practitioner and the doctor that's going to be handling all of us and Brenda Fields will no longer be in that office? That they will be over in the new office wherever you place it? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we're trying to get a bigger space, yes.
Okay. Now, and also saying that, are these Lorraine Childs and Dr. Greco, is it Greco?
Uh, Dr. Geiger?
Geiger, excuse me.
No, that's okay.
Um, they're the ones that are going to be possibly moving over there?
No, Dr. Geiger won't be moving over there.
No.
Dr. Geiger will never move his office. He's a great, he's a great doctor, but he's not going to move his office at this point. Lorraine Child would be moving. She was originally with Dr. Field.
Right, in the very beginning.
And has come back to the bay.
Yep.
Um, and she would be moving over into this space.
So if we stay with Lorraine Childs.
Correct.
Then we would follow her over to wherever this new building is going to be placed.
You've got, yes ma'am.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, this is a question actually for the board. If it's leased property with a building on it, who has to cover the insurance? Uh, does the lease owners pay for the property insurance? In case someone falls down, medical, the building burns down? Or do we have to take that coverage? Also, again, there still hasn't been a mention of the lease price. What is the bay getting for the property for leasing it to them?
John, could you answer the first question?
Uh, Trustee Loveland, I haven't seen the proposal. Trustee Loveland has a copy of it. It, it's based on, from what I saw before the, the meeting, it's based on a assessed valuation of the property. And right now, you don't have a valuation of the property. So anybody who's an amateur property assessor could chime in. But until you determine the property and have an assessment done, we're taking wild guesses.
And who would be covering the insurance on this? The bay or the leases?
That would be me. That would be our organization.
Okay, thank you.
Trustees? Okay.
Nancy Berry, six thirty seven Puffin. Um, I hear a lot of people asking about your extended hours. And, um, I think what a lot of the people living here are concerned about is, uh, you put something like this in, could the extended hours be extended a little bit more than that?
It, it's all on supply and demand. So what, we're going to initially open for, you know, six or seven. It could be where we're seeing a lot of demand that we need to be open till nine. We just have to get in, get our feet wet, kind of gauge what it's going to be. Um, Becky sitting next to me is the, uh, actual person that does the management of all of our physician practices. You would probably see her in the office more than you would see me because this is really part of what she does. But she analyzes when people are, but again, we're not going to know if we're closed, if you're coming, unless you bring it up either to the board, bring it up to John, or get ahold of me at the hospital and bring it up to myself, just let me know, hey, we need to extend the hours. And then that's when I get with Becky and we, we work through that.
Would, would Sunday be a possibility?
Absolutely.
Mr. Taylor, maybe you could answer this. Um, it was addressed or asked a couple of times. The other offices over there, have you looked at those? I understand the parking is still going to be an issue, but the open, the open spaces there now, have you considered that at all?
Are you talking about the space that's right here on the corner?
They say there's some space and I, I think it's, it was brought up, so you should respond.
Yeah, so we, we did an analysis and if, if, some of the board members, I, I think, I don't think you were here at that time, if I'm not mistaken, but, um, we did come to the board and we tried to lease the space. There was some stuff that we needed to do internally to the building when we started looking at it from an electrical perspective and some of the roof repairs and some of the other stuff. So by the time we invest into that space and do those, I, I know you said it wouldn't be a million dollars, but it was pretty doggone close to redo electrical and re, and get sprinkler systems put in a building and do all those things is, is pretty expensive. So, uh, we did look at the space and again, the space that's there is a couple of exam rooms and office and a very small waiting area. What we want to do is be able to bring specialists into the bay. So part of it is to bring the specialist in, not just the primary care physician. That current office that's in the building is way too small to do that. So if you notice on the size, it's, it's sixty by fifty, that's, that's nearly three thousand square feet. The office that's currently vacant in there is a little bit under twelve hundred square feet. I think it's eleven hundred and eighty square feet. So it's about a third of the size of, of what we really need to do. We'd need three of those empty spaces combined into one to make it work. Does that make sense?
If you were going to put that mark, that doctor's office right behind the water company, I'm just saying, what is the timeline on that? If it's from the day that the, if say the board comes to the board, they approve it within the next month or so, what is the timeline on it for when you can, uh, take care of the residents here?
That's, that's a good question. Thank you, Mr. Klosky. So, um, if we get through the town hall tonight and, and you guys decide you want to have medical services in the bay, uh, the board, I think, would take it up on, I, I don't know the next board meeting, sometime in February. We would begin the process right after the board gives approval. Um, the building can be built in twelve weeks. So we've already, I already know that. We have to do grade work, we have to run utilities and do all those things. Um, we had initially thought if we were to get approval, say in January, we were going to move in around June. So it's about a six-month period to get the permits, to get everything we need. Now, if, if we're looking at this space, we're going to have to adjust a wee bit and do some more grade work and do some, you know, some asphalting and, and do a parking area and do all that stuff. It's not a big deal. It might just add a week or two onto it. If we get approved in February, we should be up and running in July or August.
Mr. Taylor, uh, just to, just to clarify a couple of things real quick. You're wanting to put in a primary care walk-in clinic, not an urgent care or emergency clinic of any kind?
Correct.
You, you, you could stabilize somebody if, if we carried them in there, but that's not what you're, what you're staffing and preparing for?
Well, you're correct. We're not, we're not staffing it as an urgent or ER. But they are capable of stabilizing, calling EMS, yes.
Uh, i- if we, if we accept this, there's no, there will be no cost to the bay. No upfront cost, is that right? You're, everything from, from the purchase of the building to the, the setup, the groundwork, putting in sewer lines, running power, you're covering all of that.
Correct. Stewart will cover everything to put in the, the clinic.
Uh, how, how many patients do you, do you anticipate a day based on what you see at the, the hospital?
We'd hope to have, um, between the hours of, let's say it was seven AM to seven PM initially, we'd hope to have a good sixty people come through a day.
Sixty a day?
Yes.
Uh, and, and would you, would you be promoting this outside of the bay? In other words, other areas in MECO, would, would this be something that you would expect to maybe draw people from outside the bay into?
Well, and, and again, that's up to the community. So there's two things I want to be very cognizant of. I want to be cognizant that this is a very special community. It's been married to Sebastian River Hospital for many, many, many years. Um, if you don't want us to advertise outside and leave this strictly as Barefoot Bay's medical clinic, we can absolutely do that. If you want to advertise outside and, and bring people from, from MECO and Grant into the bay for maybe possible purchases or, or to help the restaurant, to help the stores, we could do that too. Again, I, I want to make sure everybody understands, this is a partnership between us and whatever you want us to do, we'll do that for you.
Ju- just, just for the sake of my, of my question, let's suppose the community rejected this. Would, would you, would the, would moving into the old doctor's building be a possibility for you? Or would, or would, or would you be out of it totally?
Are you talking about Dr. Siddiqui's old office? The, the-
The office that, the office that you were first wanting to lease from us?
Yeah, I, I don't think that we'll be able to get the liability insurance where we need it with, without making the code improvements. And that's going to be very expensive. So I, I wouldn't think we'd be able to do that.
So it's, it's kind of this deal or no deal at all?
Well, or, or we stay outside the bay. You know, with Dr. Field's office, we would remain there.
Once, once you, um, if we agree to this and once you get in and put down all your asphalt and your concrete and run your pipes and lines and dance and sing and carry on, if it doesn't work out, then you're going to remove everything, make it back to what it was.
We would remove what the, uh, bay would ask us to remove. So if you wanted to keep the extra parking for the additional parking that, to go with this building, say we put it here and we made additional parking along this row, if you wanted to keep that parking, we, we wouldn't tear up asphalt. But if you look at me and say, hey, I want you to get that up and make it green again, we'll get it up and make it green again.
Well, the question I have is, are you, maybe my question, my, is that you're thinking about putting parking in. I mean, I don't, I don't see any way you're not going to be able to get away with not putting parking in. I mean, you're going to have to put parking in because there's not room there for sixty people a day. I mean-
Yeah, we can, we can definitely put parking in. I mean, that's all part of the proposal. It's not initially on the proposal that we have. But if, if, if we want to go into this space and the community says this is the best space, we just have to put some parking lot space in. We can put a building off of that a little bit, come out, put asphalt and put parking spots in. We can do that.
The red, the red square triangle, whatever that's there, is that? Uh, how do I want to say this? Like where the, where the food store and all stuff is, is that? What do I want to say? Is that, um, never mind. I, it, is it, um, in? I've lost it, never mind.
A question, uh, history here, um, not that we've agreed to this or anything else. And again, this would have to come back to the board. Is that space that he's talking about between the banks, is that as open an option as the other space? I'm not saying the other space is, I'm simply saying, uh, uh, that's not a sacred place. It's not something that we've held in reserve or?
Not that I'm aware of. It's a common area owned by the district.
Yeah, okay.
One of the areas that we haven't talked about, uh, and it's, it, it's the least busy parking area in the whole complex is, I, I guess that's the west end on the other side from the big green space, that parking lot.
Here?
That, yes. Uh, I mean, I'm, I'm in that area quite a bit and you rarely see people in that parking lot other than maybe what you see there, three cars or maybe four cars. So, I mean, I could see, it, it would be worth watching that lot maybe for the next little while, but I could see putting the building on the, on the other side of that lot and not having to add additional parking because that, there's no storefronts there on that end. It, it's just, uh, it, it's, it's not used very much as far as parking goes.
So, so, um, if I may ask, is that a pond or is that, is that a runoff pond?
No.
No.
I, I just can't tell from the, it's all flat?
Yes. I, I mean, if you're, if you're not wanting to have to go the expense and the trouble of adding parking, that's probably, probably a good place.
I guess the point is if we at some point, the board decides this is something that we agreed to and we'd like you to do it, you're going to pretty much put it wherever you can put it or where we think you should put it, correct?
Correct. Wherever you, wherever the community decides and, and as long as we can get that approved for Bovard County, we're good to go.
And so the, the other point was you talked about whether you're going to advertise or not, but you're not going to restrict this to just Barefoot Bay people. You can't do that.
It's available for the community. So you're right, we're, what we're not going to do is put a billboard out on US one pointing primary care clinic. It's going to be there.
But so you understand, if someone from Snug Harbor is having chest pains, we're not going to restrict them.
No, no, they could come straight over. I, I see what you're saying, yeah. I just found out about Snug Harbor this past week.
Oh, you heard about it.
So it, it's kind of connected. So, you know, it would be for them as well, but yeah.
Nancy Isley, Barefoot Boulevard. Uh, there's two things I want to talk about. First of all, is this outside business? Because remember, we're going to have a lot of building down MECO Road. There are a lot of houses coming down there, a lot of people coming in right down MECO Road. So that's something to consider in your thinking about that. The other question I have is, there is, behind the Wells Fargo Bank, there is a drainage, a pond. But also, and Mr. Klosky, you may know this, Wells Fargo Bank is on private property. We don't own that property. I don't know how far back it goes.
The parcel that folks are talking about right there is point five-one acres. The specific lot lines, I'm not sure, but trustee Wheaton had asked about the specifics before the meeting.
Thank you.
Just, if I may ask a question, from my knowledge, so Wells Fargo is private, is Valley Bank also a private, is that private property too? Okay.
Robin Robinson, eight-fifty Cashew Circle. Before coming to the meeting, I was on the, your Barefoot, our Barefoot Bay speaks out and the other websites, and several things have come up, and as somebody else who lives in the community, a lot of negativity has been around Stewart and what they charge people. Can you just explain to everybody why this is a benefit, price-wise, as opposed to sometimes going to a hospital, so that they have a full understanding as to why? Because that's one of the negatives I've seen in the comments regarding this coming in here.
So, just for the community to know, so Sebastian River is a hospital-based service. So the diagnostic center, when you go there to get diagnostics, is hospital-based charges. We're talking about a physician office, so it's gonna be no different than a physician office that you would go to, if they accept Medicare and they're a Medicare provider, the copays and everything's the same. It doesn't, that doesn't have any hospital-based charges. This is an outpatient clinic, it's a primary care clinic, walk-in, so it's not affiliated with Sebastian River as far as charges or anything like that goes. Sebastian River is a hospital and acute care-based system, this is a physician office, so it's completely different. As a matter of fact, it's SMG, which is Stewart Medical Group, and Ms. Boyle, this is kind of her show. I'm just here because I've been in the community, this is probably now my fourth or fifth or sixth trip up, so, you know, I'm coming representing Stewart as a whole, but I would be remiss if I said it didn't affect the hospital, because the community uses the hospital, it's their hospital. As Robin knows, she's one of our talented employees, so, you know, as we go through that, she does have those concerns, and I can tell you, everyone in my hospital has the same concern. Because it's not just for community, it also affects us as employees. We have the same thing. So we have to decide if we want to use the hospital-based service or if we want to use an outpatient clinic. So we go through the same thing everyone else goes through.
Thank you.
I would like to say, I noticed some of the posting out there, too. One thing that I do know is that whether it's HealthFirst or whether it's Stewart, or no matter who it is, they work on two things. They work on insurance contracts and they work on Medicare allowable. So it doesn't matter if you're HealthFirst or if you're Stewart. If Medicare allows ten dollars or something, that is all Medicare is gonna allow, then Medicare says you pay the twenty percent, so out of that ten, you're gonna pay two. Stewart can't charge any more than what HealthFirst can charge or anybody else. I mean, they can charge whatever they want to charge, but they're not gonna be able to accept any more than what Medicare allowable is. Same thing with their insurance contracts. If they have a Blue contract, or they have a Cigna contract, or they have an Aetna contract, it is the way that they've worked their contracts, and your insurance company sets us pricing. Stewart does not really set the pricing. They set what price they're gonna bill Medicare. You know, you'll see a bill for two hundred dollars and Medicare allowed twenty-five. That doesn't mean that that service was worth twenty-five, that just means that's what Medicare came to determination with their medical review staff, that that's what they're gonna pay. The reason Stewart has to charge two hundred dollars is because if they now charge a hundred dollars and make that a practice, Medicare will cut them down to fifteen dollars for that service. So they have to maintain a high charge rate in order to sustain theirself at a Medicare allowable rate. All facilities have to do that. So when you see somebody go, oh, well, they charge more than this, or they charge more than that, and if they're a Medicare patient or they're an insured patient, then they're really not telling you the truth.
I couldn't have said it better myself.
Fantastic.
On the concept project schedule here, you have the total project duration of a hundred days, start is, this you have is January sixth, twentieth, finish is five, twenty-two, twenty. So that's what the whole project, it'll take that long to get that project from get going to the end?
It's gonna take a little bit longer. If we come into, say, a space that we have to do some grade and parking here, or, you know, like Roger said, if this is an underutilized space and we wanted to put something here and maybe extend the asphalt to put a row of parking or something, you're probably gonna extend it about two to four weeks. I mean, the good news about us entering the summer is it rains every day, but it doesn't rain long and it dries up really quickly, so we're able to get a lot of construction done in that time.
You're saying that if it comes to the board at the next meeting in the last Tuesday in February, at that time, say it's on the agenda and the board approves and everything from that day, I said then, asked you before, you said it'd take, you'd be probably around September, you'd be moving in to do, for the, you'd be open for people in the bay in September, right?
If it's approved in February, five months post-February, so it'd be March, April, May, June, July, I would say at the latest, it'd probably be August.
August.
Yeah.
So you still follow the same pattern that you got here?
Mm-hmm. Just add a couple weeks for the grade and the asphalt work.
So it would probably take a little more than what you could, here you got the hundred days, but then you got the Stewart Capitol Committee approval, lease execution, site survey design, permitting.
Yes, so Mr. Klosky, most of that's already been done. The Capitol Committee, so just for the board and also the community, I've already went through the process of getting Stewart to approve this project. So this project is approved.
That's taken care of.
It's all, all we're waiting on is for the bay to decide if they want the services and to have the property identified where we can get started. So most of that's already been done on the back end. Even the design of the modular unit, we went through four or five design phases, and I actually have a doctor that we have sent out to try to employ. So we have a doctor on the line, we have everything where we need it, we're just waiting on approval.
Other thing I want to, maybe I would explain to the residents, you got the two options here, what really is the difference between the two of them? I looked at it, I have a feeling, but if you want to explain it?
Yeah, so the proposal has two different options. The first option is, if we buy everything, and I'm talking about buying the, John, if you could go back, please. If we go back and we end up buying this unit outright and we do all the construction work, we do everything, it's roughly a million dollars. If we lease this building, we're gonna save quite a bit on the front end, but we're still gonna have to end up paying it on the back end. Does that make sense? So to lease it, it's probably gonna come in about six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So you would think it's a modular, why is it gonna cost six-hundred? But there's architects, engineers, there's utilities, there's electricity, grade work, we have to build the handicap accessible ramps, we have to have steps, do all of those things. But that, again, I want to be clear, neither one of those had additional parking. If we do additional parking, it's gonna put more money into it, but again, the bay's responsible for none of that. That's all gonna be footed by Stewart's Corporation.
Just as a comment, general comment, I think this is very positive for the bay, it would be something very positive. I think we still have some questions about what we are going to get out of this, what the lease price, what the dollar amounts are, all of those kinds of things. But if we're looking to do this in February, I would suggest that you focus almost entirely on that piece of land between the banks. If you put a facility up there and you put some new parking in, it's going to help everyone, and you're not gonna get the negative comments from all the people that use that building if you stick it out in where they do the Halloween night.
Oh, yeah, I didn't know that. You're right. If we put it where they're doing trunk-or-treat, I'm assuming trunk-or-treat, you back your car in and you do candy out of the trunk, yeah.
Right. And you've heard the negative comments tonight about how that is full now.
Yeah.
So you don't want to put something in there and just hear that for the next five years.
Right, right.
And so I would suggest you look strictly at that piece of property between the two banks.
So I'll be honest, the piece of property that the board and the community approves is where we're going. I would ask that there would be a couple of options, and the only reason I ask that is, we may find out with, in between the banks, where their property lines come in, may come in closer than what we know, because I don't have that, the lot lines. So that could be, you know, that's option one, preferable by the community and the board. If that doesn't work, option two, maybe, that front area I think you were talking about could be there. But I would ask that, consider a couple of options, with your primary one being number one, and we'll do our best to make that happen.
And that's what I said, if we're looking to do this in February, I think you have to look at that property right away. Because as far as I'm concerned, I don't know with the rest of the board, but that would be my choice for sure, so.
Mr. Chairman Trustees, briefly speaking with General Counsel Repinger, he believes that you probably would be voting on this twice. You would vote on the concept, and then once Mr. Repinger has worked with the hospital's attorneys, you'd probably bring it back for a final vote, once all the details are worked out.
MJ Kalish, eight-hundred Beach Court. I just have a question. We're talking about properties and locations. What about the piece of land across from the water department? That's a big, that parking lot alongside the convenience store is always empty. Nobody uses it. And that piece of property isn't used by anything or anyone.
So are you referring to this piece?
No, down, come down.
This piece?
Right there. It's a big piece of property. You've got an entryway off Midway, and that parking lot there is always empty. Just a thought.
Well, I think that's one of the three things you just mentioned. That's one of the three that you would look at, but again, you're still gonna be talking about parking there and spaces and what they're used for. Again, I would still think you would focus on the other piece first.
Yeah, and as I look at this one, I mean, this makes a lot of sense, but this one, you could back up a parking lot here, you could put parking spaces in here, and then run them this way as well?
It's already there.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if we needed to add additional in case something happens where this gets overrun, we could have some additional, just a couple of strips of asphalt this way, put the building here and have some side park, if need be. I'm just saying, if need be. We want to grow with the community. We may get in there and see a hundred people a day. You never know, but we want to be able to have the flexibility to grow a little bit.
Ralph, I have a...
Anything else from the board?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
When, the reason I think that you're choosing the modular is that they can professionally, whoever's building it can professionally outfit it, is that correct? I mean, like for your x-ray room, aren't you gonna have to have a special lining on the walls?
Correct. We can get it done. So it's not just a modular unit, it has to be done to specs for a medical office. That's correct.
And your lab's gonna have to meet standard for sterilization and?
It's gonna be a draw station, so it would be a draw station and then take it back to the lab, yeah.
So it's not like mixing or anything like?
Correct. Not compounding, right.
Anyone else from the audience?
I know there's a burning question out there somewhere.
Go ahead.
See, I knew it, right there.
Mike Salamon, four-forty Barefoot Bay Boulevard. The question is, between the two banks, is that, can you lease that land or do you have to sell it? In other words, will you accept the lease?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, a land lease for now.
Oh, yeah, because they said it's owned by Barefoot Bay, so you can lease that land. So that would be, that would be the best place, I think, would be to put it?
So what I'm gonna have to do, so everyone knows, is we check the zoning rights on this piece of property, so we know that is zone commercial. I'm gonna have to check the zoning on this piece of property as a takeaway from tonight, which is a great takeaway, but I've gotta get my corporate real estate and facilities lead in Florida to go to Brevard and look at this and make sure it's zone commercial. I'm fairly certain it is, but I'd need to make sure.
Thank you.
If you do that, how long would it take you to get it out, taken care of?
You mean, getting with him to find out?
Yeah, that section there, how long would it be, so you can get back to the board on what you want to do?
So I'm gonna text him on the way back home tonight and have him go ahead and take a look at it. So I'll, he's waiting on me tonight. He was gonna come tonight, and I told him not tonight, maybe he could come another time. It might have been good to have him come tonight, but I'll have him take a look at that first thing in the morning.
Yeah, this is just a public relations question. I know if you put it behind the water company, or if you put it on the east side of the shopping plaza, some of the residents aren't gonna be very happy about staring at a building. I know we have at least one resident that doesn't like looking at a sign, and in the past, when the playground, no one liked the playground that was there. So the bay's gonna have to think about some negative comments by the residents that live around that area.
Can I ask where the playground was? Was the playground here?
No, it was in the big.
Oh, it was in the big, this big, okay. I knew you wanted to say something.
You know I wanted to. Lorraine Andrews, one-two-two-one-Chippewa. I'm just gonna say something in general, okay? I'm not against right now, but I'm worried about the parking situation and you going into that area where the water department is with another manufactured facility. I would, I agree with David Wheaton and Mike Minow, as far as going out into that area on the left between the two banks. Check out and see if that is gonna be enough room for your facility. I think that would be a better spot for it, and these are brick and mortar buildings, and you're talking a manufactured building. And this area here is already very crowded for parking. I've come around the back to meetings in the CBO office, and there is just no parking. And I've come in a golf cart and no parking. So my personal feeling, if you're gonna put a manufactured facility in, it's not a brick and mortar building, I would stick it between the two banks if you're able to do that, because then that way, it kind of leaves the other brick and mortar buildings look, I'm not saying they look bad, manufactured homes look bad, but it's gonna look out of place in that area, and the parking is definitely gonna be a problem.
So let me, so this, again, is our initial concept. If we're here for five years and we see that we're seeing sixty, seventy, and eighty patients a day, there will definitely be discussions about a potential acquisition of the property or entering a long-term lease with the bay, where maybe a brick and mortar building can be built here and replace the modular unit.
Why wouldn't you want to put a modular there, where it's already, you know, you could add parking that you're gonna need, because there is not enough of parking. So why wouldn't you consider that first, to put it in that area, or at least get your people to look at it, to see what they can do as far as the lines, you know, the area of the property? And personally, I think that would be a better place for it.
Up here?
Yeah.
Correct, okay.
I think most of the people in the community like this idea right now. I think you got John Coffey here right now, why don't you turn it to John and his people to find the best place for this place to do that, and then bring it to the board? I think most homeowners think this is a great idea. To be able to go to a doctor where the x-ray is right there, the blood draw is right there, if they decide you need a little ultrasound or something, a little congestion, then it's available to us. And you don't have to leave the community, and we do have plenty of space here. And it'd be nice to be able to get a specialist, if you really need one, and these people would bring them in. So I think the community wants it, it's just a matter of where to put it, and leave it to John Coffey, he's our city manager. He can find the best spot for this thing that's agreeable to them. Thanks for your time.
So, is the board's wishes? No, we're not gonna, but just... Yeah, again, not the board's wishes, but I think that's what we're talking about. You have some work to do, first of all, to go and find some information. So you're gonna find out, come back to John, and we're gonna deal from there.
Yep.
That's what the answer is, right. So then you'll come back to John, and then John can decide like that, then he can come back to us, and what you both have is what you would like to do. Go ahead, John.
If I could try to streamline this, are you...
If I could try to streamline this, are you wanting information back, or are you wanting to come back with a conceptual proposal to approve, to send to CLIF for contract?
Probably a conceptual proposal to go to CLIF, and what they want, and if they're happy right between the two banks, then it's fine, they'll let you know, and then that's when you come back, for the board to do something with it.
But again, we haven't looked at any dollar figures or financial figures, so we need that information, whether sent out to us or not to the board. So, because when we come back in February, and we're going to vote on a concept, we have to understand what we're voting on.
I agree with Mike and Joe. I think that to come back with a concept, and the property appraisal, plus the percentage of what we're looking at, the percentage of the appraised property value for the lease.
Anyone else?
When you say the appraised value, is that something Stewart's interested in getting an appraisal, or are you wanting us to get an appraisal, or they usually got to be paid for?
That is a good question. That's a good question, though.
That's something Stewart would probably want to do for us, just to get in here.
Yeah, well, and here's the reality, we do have to do a fair market value, and anytime you're dealing in healthcare, we'll do a fair market value. But it's great to know, and I don't want to say do you who, if you really like this idea. But it's great to know that now I can focus on a piece of property to get those numbers. So understand, this is all conceptual, this is what we were thinking. After hearing this, this community tonight, it sounds like this is by far the selection the community would like. So I can be able to take that back, and start to do that cost analysis on that piece of property on a land lease.
Because I believe that, by putting it there, in the long run, there'll be more space for parking and everything, and we won't be interfering with, either by the water company, or where the last place you had, or even right across from the shopping plaza, because it's going to be a nice ordeal. Somebody will always complain, like somebody says, somebody would probably complain and everything. Right there, be fine. So you've got to study it, come back to John, John will bring it back to us, and then we'll, with the price and everything, then we'll work on it. What do we have to do? Is anyone else in the audience like to speak? No? What? There will be February, what? No, that one is canceled.
The trustees, by consensus, canceled the meeting today, on the 14th.
So if no one has anything to say, and the board don't have anything to say, I need a motion to adjourn?
I move, we adjourn.
Right second.
Meeting adjourned, thank you for calling.